Good evening and welcome to our Village Board of Trustees meeting of January 16th. If we can all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a point of order, behind you are the exit signs and off to your right here. Welcome again, everyone coming this evening. It's been a rough couple of days with the weather and appreciate you coming in. Okay, just one moment here, I just, okay. First order of business is I need a motion to open up the public hearing introducing local law of 2024, the overriding of the tax levy limit established by general municipal law, section 3 dash C. Can I get a motion?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
Barringer will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna read something, I think, regarding this. Yeah, public hearing is being held this evening, January 16th, on Tuesday, 2024, in the boardroom of the Village of Monroe, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, to review the proposed local law entitled, "Overriding Tax Levy Limit Established by General Municipal Law, Section 3-C." The purpose of this local law is to allow the Village of Monroe to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2024, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by general municipal law, section 3-C. We had a motion, a second, we called a question. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak upon this, please come up, speak to the mic, give your clerk their name, and we'll go from there. Don't be shy. No one wishing to speak on the matter? Okay, why don't we just go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing, as there's nobody wishing to speak on this matter?
Farrow will make the motion. Carl will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. Okay, second order of business is the public hearing introducing local law, 2024, the Village of Monroe, environmentally constrained lands law. Public hearing is being held this evening, January 16th, in the boardroom of the Village of Monroe, to review a proposed local law entitled, "The Village of Monroe, Environmentally Constrained Lands Law." The purpose of this local law will require all environmentally constrained lands to be deducted from the lot area for the purposes of the new subdivisions, any new subdivisions, and zoning. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Barringer will make the motion.
Farrow, a second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Public meeting is now open for local law, Village of Monroe, environmentally constrained local landlords. So we'll give it a moment. If anybody wishes to speak upon this, please come forward.
Have we heard back from the county? Okay, Mr. Mayor, we, we sent this to the county, we have not heard back. We also sent this to the planning board. The planning board has 45 days to comment. That 45-day period is not up yet, so I would suggest that you hold the public hearing open to the next meeting, rather than close it in case we either hear from the county or we hear from the planning board and modifications to the law are suggested and approved by this board.
Okay, so, Kim, when's the next meeting?
February 6.
What is it?
February 6.
February 6?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, if no one wishes to speak upon the public hearing, I think I make a motion or I ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing until the February 6 meeting, at which time we can address this matter.
Carl will make the motion to continue the public hearing on February 6.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. All right, next order of business, I just want to do a roll call. Trustee Barringer?
Barringer is present.
Trustee Farrow?
Farrow will hear.
Trustee Carl?
Carl, present.
Trustee O'Connor?
O'Connor, present.
And Mayor Dwyer here. Thank you so much. Okay, next order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes, excuse me, department reports, I'm sorry, I managed to skip those. So I need a motion to accept the department reports that are submitted by the department heads.
Carl will make the motion.
Barringer will second.
Question?
Yeah, just real quick, on the water, if you're looking at the water consumptions, you know, they're up from last year, although we were out of the water restrictions at this time last year.
Right.
It was 2.8 million gallons more for the month this year than the same time last year. So that-
What month, John?
What's that?
What month is that period?
December.
December.
So that roughly comes out to about 93,000 gallons per day on average, our consumption is at.
Increase.
Increase, yep. Consumptions are moving, moving in an upward direction.
Is there, is there any recommendation? I know the board has been talking for a long time about increasing over certain usage, paying more.
Yeah, we gotta get that to the finish line.
Yeah, we, we, we've done a lot of debt service that we just incurred and borrowed money, and we have met with Mr. Natale, and it was one of my things under trustee comments to see where we are with that, but that, we've got to start moving that along.
Yeah.
Get that, get the water rates in play. We've got a couple of, two or three different scenarios that we've worked out with Alan Natale, so.
Interestingly enough, though, set of circumstances, so trustee Carl and myself have been working on this for quite some time, and then we kind of let it sit for a while as we were going through whatever process during the time where we're talking about the, you know, the emergency issue came up right away and so forth. But what's interesting is, since then, we've incurred likely close to another million dollars in infrastructure as a result of the work that we've been doing. So that's really an important piece because we couldn't make that up otherwise.
Well, we did get some HUD money, so, the community development money-
Yeah.
-to help with the 4 She Street, but yeah, I mean, once, once Calvin Terrace is done, all of our asbestos cement water main is-
Done.
Is done.
Yeah.
So, it's about, well, by the time we get done here with the, finishing up that other piece on the transmission line, we'll have put in about 14,000 feet of main in the last three and a half years.
That's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good accomplishment. The board's done a lot of hard work and I, I for one appreciate all the work everybody puts in. So, all right, so I think, just regarding the, is that the only comment you had?
Yeah, that's all, I just wanted to bring that up to the board.
All right, so very good, so I need, we had a motion and we had a second, any further discussions?
No.
Do you have any?
No, no, no.
Sure?
Yeah, I'm good.
You looked like you had something.
No, no, I just, I know we wanted to talk about the, the water rates.
Okay, so we have first, second, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Next order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes as submitted by the clerk for the January 2 meeting. I need a motion from someone, please.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Next order of business is the January 5 special board meeting. I need a motion to accept the minutes from that meeting.
Farrow will make the motion?
Carl will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, abstain.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, abstain.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. Okay, next order of business, budget transfers and modifications as submitted by the treasurer. I need a motion to accept them as submitted.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you.
Just got word, two-hour delay for school tomorrow.
Yeah, this is freezing.
I won't get mine until tomorrow.
Okay, next order of business is part-time billing control clerk, trustee Carl.
Yeah, hold on one second, let me just-
Yep.
Resolve, the board of trustees accepts the recommendation of Mayor Dwyer and appoints Brandy Lenari, 22 Cunningham Drive, Monroe, New York, to the part-time position of billing control clerk, effective January 9, 2024, at a salary of $23 per hour from budget line F-8310101, administration, public, or personal services billing clerk. I'll put that in form for motion.
Second, please?
Barringer will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
And we have the approval from Orange County.
Kim's all over that.
Okay, I'm denied.
Okay, cool. Next order of business, part-time secretary to the planning board. Trustee Farrow, you want to do that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Resolve, the board of trustees accepts, oh no, is this the right one?
Not this one? Right?
It says the planning board, it's the resignation, this says resignation, accepts the recommendation, I'm sorry, it's a long night. The board of trustees accepts the recommendation of Mayor Dwyer and appoints Terry Brink, 669 Lakes Road, Monroe, to the part-time position of part-time secretary of the planning board, effective January 9, 2024, at a salary of $23 per hour, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Carl will second that.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you.
Can I try again?
Sure. Next order of business is the appointment of zoning board of appeals alternate member, ZBA John Benros.
Resolve, the board of trustees accepts the recommendation of Mayor Dwyer and appoints John Benros, 12 Cunningham Drive, New York, to the zoning board of appeals to fill the vacant alternate position that currently exists on the ZBA. Mr. Benros is appointed to the zoning board of appeals for a five-year term, fulfilling the unexpired term until March 31, 2026, of Linsir, alternate ZBA member, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please?
Farrow, a second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Welcome aboard, Mr. Benros. Thank you for serving, much appreciated. Okay, next order of business, did we get any feedback from the chairman?
I do not get any feedback from the chairman. My sense of his mind.
So I'd like to, can I appoint him a contingent upon acceptance, or is it, just don't do it?
I would table it until you hear from him.
Okay, I'm gonna table that next appointment.
Maybe, maybe you can call him.
Yeah, I will, trying to do this, yeah.
I'm actually trying because we don't have much time.
We don't.
And why don't we have much time?
Oh, the secretary's leaving. She hasn't given her resignation yet, but she's moving.
Okay.
I apologize to the public, I'm trying to reach out to my chairman on a, on a matter. Okay, next order of business is the adoption of local law, 2024, overriding the tax levy limit established by general municipal law. I need a motion?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you.
Now, just, maybe I should have brought it up on a discussion, just for clarification. If we don't exceed the tax increase-
Right.
-we just come back and rescind that law, correct?
Afterwards.
Afterwards, after the fact, yep, okay.
Okay, next order of business, we had a first and second, we call the question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next order of business, resolution to acquire real property, 150 Franklin Avenue. Okay, whereas the village board is authorized on the village local law of 1-102 to acquire real property on behalf of the Village of Monroe residents, and whereas property adjoining Smith Clover Park is available for purchase and the village desires to acquire such land for the purpose of providing open space for the benefit of the Village of Monroe residents, and whereas said property has approximately .39 acres, .39 acres, one existing home, and whereas the property will serve as a buffer between Smith Clover Park and the surrounding development, whereas the village board of trustees has spent several months negotiating with the seller of the property to arrive at a purchase price, and whereas the village board of trustees has consulted with local real estate brokerage houses, evaluated the past market trends, and determines that the price, the purchase price is a reasonable purchase price in light of the current market, and whereas the village board hereby declares itself to be lead agency pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act, and whereas after comparing the thresholds found in 6 New York CRR, Part 617.4 and 5, the village board hereby declares that this is an unlisted action for purposes of seeker, and whereas the village prepared a short environmental assessment form in connection with this matter. Now therefore be resolved that having reviewed the environmental assessment form, the proposed acquisition will not result in any adverse environmental impacts, as the acquisition of the property will not result in any construction or change to the site, rather the site will serve as a buffer between the existing parkland and surrounding development, and be it further resolved, the board of trustees find that the acquisition of the property is in the best interest of the Village of Monroe, hereby authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract of sale between John A. Farrell individually and as sole trustee of the John A. Farrell and Rosemarie F. Farrell Living Trust for the purpose, purchase of 150 Franklin Avenue in the amount of $550,000. I need a motion to approve this resolution.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Farrow will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Okay, next order of business is the bond acceptance acquisition for 150 Franklin Avenue in the village office and/or other village purposes. Bond resolution of the Village of Monroe, New York, adopted January 16, 2024, authorizing issuance of bonds at a principal amount not to exceed $522,500 to finance a part of the cost of the acquisition of land located at 150 Franklin Avenue, Monroe, to be used for village offices and/or other village purposes, stating that the estimated maximum cost thereof is $550,000 and appropriating said amount for such purpose, including the expenditure of $27,500 from other available village funds to pay the balance of the said cost. The board of trustees of the Village of Monroe and the County of Orange, New York, hereby resolves by the favorable vote of not less than two-thirds of all the members of the board of trustees as follows. Section 1, the Village of Monroe and the County of Orange, New York, herein called the village, is hereby authorized to issue bonds at a principal amount not to exceed $522,500 pursuant to local village, excuse me, finance law constituting Chapter 33-A of the consolidated laws to the state of New York herein called the law. To finance a part of the total cost of acquisition of the land located at 150 Franklin Avenue, Monroe, to be used for village offices and/or other village purposes, Section 204, Block 4, Lot 1. Section 2, the estimated maximum cost of the project described herein, including preliminary costs and costs incidental thereto, and the financing thereof is $550,000, and said amount is to be hereby appropriated for this purpose. The plan of the financing includes the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $522,500 to finance a part of this said appropriation, the expenditure of $27,500 from other available village funds to pay the balance of the said appropriation, and the levy and collection of taxes for all of taxable real property in the village to pay for the principal of said bonds and the interest thereon as the same shall become due and payable. The following additional matters are hereby determined and declared, Section 3. The period of probable usefulness applicable to the object or purpose for which said bonds are authorized to be issued within the limitations of Section 11.00A.21 of the law is 30 years. However, the bonds authorized pursuant to this resolution and any bond anticipation note issued in anticipation of the sale of said bonds shall mature no later than five years after the date of the original issuance of said bonds or notes. B, the proceeds of the bonds herein authorized in any bond anticipation note issued in anticipation of said bonds may be applied to the reimbursement to the village for expenditures made after the effective date of this resolution for the purpose of which said bonds were authorized. The foregoing statement of intent with respect to reimbursement is made in conformity with Treasury Regulation Section 1.150-2 of the United States Treasury Department. C, maturity, excuse me, the proposed maturity of the bonds authorized for this resolution will not exceed five years. Each of the bonds authorized for this resolution and any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the said of sale of said bonds shall contain the recital of validity as described in Section 52.00 of the law, and said bonds and any notes issued in anticipation of said bonds shall be generated with generally, shall be general obligations of the village, payable as to both principal and interest by general tax upon all the taxable real property within the village. The faith and credit of the village are hereby irrevocably pledged to the punctual payment of the principal of and said, and interest on said bonds, and any notes issued in anticipation of the sale of said bonds and provision shall be made annually in the budget of the village for appropriation for the amortization and redemption of the bonds in any notes in anticipation thereof to mature in such year, and B, the payment of interest to be due and payable in such year. Five, Section 5, subject to the provisions of this resolution and the law pursuant to the provisions of Section 21.00 of the law relative to the authorization of the issuance of bonds with substantially level or declining annual debt service, Section 33, excuse me, 30.00, relative to the authorization of the issuance of bond anticipation notes, and Section 50.00 and Sections 56.00 to 60.00 and 168.00 of the law, the powers and duties of the board of trustees relative to authorizing bond anticipation notes and prescribing the terms, forms, and contents, and as to the sale and issuance of the bonds herein authorized, and of any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of said bonds, and the renewals of said bond anticipation notes, and as to the execution of agreements for credit enhancements are hereby delegated to the village treasurer, the chief fiscal officer of the village. Section 6, the village, the validity of the bonds authorized by this resolution and of any notes issued and issued in anticipation of the sale of said bonds may be contested only if, A, such obligations are authorized for any object or purpose for which the village is not authorized to expend money, or B, the provisions of the law which should be complied with at the date of the publication of such resolution or summary thereof are not substantially complied with, and any action suit or proceeding contesting such validity is commenced within 20 days after the date of the first publication, or C, such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution. Section 7, this bond resolution shall take effect immediately and the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish the foregoing resolution in summary together with a note, notice attached to, in substantia, in substantially the form prescribed by Section 81.00 of the law in the official newspaper of the village. I need a motion to accept this resolution as written and read into the minutes.
O'Connor will make the motion?
Second?
Carl will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. Okay, next order of business, trustee Carl?
Yeah, that, from what I understand, that payment authorization for, for She Street is not ready, needs to be tabled.
Really?
Per John, per John O'Rourke, yeah.
I have an email from him.
Sorry?
I have the email, I put it on there.
Okay.
Once we get-
Right, it was hot to trot, he, man, oh man. Okay, next order of business, trustee Carl, payment authorization number one on Calvin Terrace Water Main Project, Replacement Project.
Yep, resolve, the board of trustees accepts the recommendation of village engineer John O'Rourke, P.E., and approves payment number one submitted by TM Enterprises for the Calvin Terrace Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $7,158. All documentation has been reviewed and found complete. Mayor Dwyer is hereby authorized to sign the voucher for payment, and I'll put that in form for motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Barringer will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. Next order of business, trustee O'Connor, village elections.
Resolve, the board of trustees hereby appoint the following certified county-approved workers to serve as election inspectors, slash poll workers and machine operators for the March 19, 2024 village election. The polls will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Compensation for chairman is $150. Poll workers and machine operators is $125. Machine operators, Ronald Vendano, chairman, 40 Woodcock Road, Monroe, New York, Lawrence Lazak, 62 Margaret Road, Monroe, New York. Poll workers, Robin Van Donk, 385 Harriman Heights Road, Harriman, New York, Teresa Friedman, 12 Second Avenue, Monroe, New York, Charles McCook, Clark Lane, Monroe, New York, and Ruth Wanamaker, 708 Lennox Road, Monroe, New York. Alternate Stephen Davis, 32 Cunningham Drive, Monroe, New York, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. Next order of business, authorization to advertise for seasonal employment laborers. Resolve, the village clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for two seasonal full-time labor positions to assist the Village of Monroe DPW Department beginning April of 2024 at an hourly rate of $20 per hour. Candidates must possess a valid driver's license. The Orange County application for employment can be found on the village's website or in the village clerk's office. Be it further resolved, the board of trustees authorize the hiring of two full-time seasonal laborers to work 40 hours per week at an hourly rate of $20 per hour. I need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second for discussion.
Sure.
Now, how long does this go on for, the seasonal laborers?
So, we didn't put an end date on it, but typically they're into November, but they can go nine months, I believe, yeah.
Okay, so they'll get, probably go through the leaf season with-
Oh, definitely leaf season, absolutely. I'm hoping, you know, if they, we need them in the winter, they're here too, but whatever, right? Definitely through the leaf season, though.
All right, so nine, nine-month max?
Yes. And I think at that point you'd have to go back to the county, I think, right?
Then they have to, they can take like a two-week break and-
Come back, right, got it.
However you want to do that.
All right, so we had a first and second discussion, it's good, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrow, aye.
Carly.
O'Connor, aye.
Why are I so carried? Thank you. And the next order of business is introducing the introductory local law of 2024, the amendment to Chapter 150, parks and scheduling a public hearing. He resolved that an introductory local law titled Amendment to Chapter 150, Parks, is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the board of trustees, the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be it further resolved, the copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the board of trustees, and be it further resolved, the board of trustees shall hold a public hearing on the said proposed local law in the village hall at Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at 7:00 p.m. on February 6, 2024, and be it further resolved, the village clerk shall cause or publish, or cause to be published, a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no less than five days prior thereto. I need a motion to set the public hearing.
Farrow will make the motion?
Carl will second for discussion.
Yep.
This is in reference to Smith Clover Park, correct? And to, Smith Clover Park and all village parks?
This is in reference to all village parks, and it sets a, a couple of standards, like dawn to dusk, you know, no loitering, et cetera. However, it does carve out and exempt Smith's Clover Park where the park commission has set its own rules.
All right, because the only, the only question I have here, it says under municipal unit, the Village of Monroe, the Village of Harriman, the Village of Curious Joel, the Town of Palm Tree, and the Town of Monroe.
Right.
If these are Village of Monroe parks, why would these other municipalities be involved in that?
They wouldn't be. Town of Monroe would be.
They wouldn't be.
Town of Monroe would be only with Smith Clover Park.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just saw the municipal unit, and it just doesn't look, that, that, that's got to get modified.
I think the municipal unit for my, my view should be removed.
All right, let me look at that. I'll look at that and...
Yeah. So, Smith Clover is exempt because they have their own regulations within the park, which is appointed by five commissioners.
Right, and I'll, yep, and I'll, overlaw, have more to do with the public, period.
I just want to make sure, I'm, I'm not sure that, I think that that might already be in, in the local law. In other words, um...
Yeah, it just, it just doesn't look right.
Yeah, I, I think that where I've underlined it is what I've added, but let me just check.
You have, yeah, you got the joint parks commission underlined.
Yeah, because there was no, there was no definition.
But the problem with the municipal unit, Elise, I'm sorry, is that it's got Curious Joe Palm Tree, so that, that's no longer, that's not any older than four years, right?
Well, let me just, let me just look.
Quite short with the year.
But I don't, I just don't understand why those other municipalities are in there. They have their own park systems, village of Harriman, they have their own rules down there, and the town of Monroe has some off-site parks that...
Yeah, actually, that's, that's already in your code. Facilities, municipal union, unit, person, resident, village, what I added was what's underlined. So I added park commission and permit. So, do you want me to take that out?
Well, in the context, I'm just looking for it now. What we did again?
It's right here.
Top definitions?
Yeah, 150-1.
I don't know why it's there, but it's already in there. Let me see where else it...
Well, KJ at one time understood, but that's, they're now part of Palm Tree.
Um, this was, this was modified in 2013. So...
Twelve time ago, yeah.
That was, I think, the latest...
Yeah.
I'm just telling you, it's already there.
I, I just think that...
I think the whole thing comes out unless there's a definition behind it.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, it's village of KJ. So I think I changed it to town of Palm Tree. But do you want me to take, I, I just don't know where, there may be an app, there may be a provision applicable to municipal unit, so I don't want to just take it out without seeing if it's going to affect anything in the local law.
I, I don't, I don't understand how it would affect the village of Harriman, because we, everybody has their own parks and their own...
Yeah, but, but, but there may be a reference...
But part of Monroe, the town of, which the town is covered.
The town is only, everything we have going with the town is Smith Clover, Smith Clover Park. That's, that's the only thing we have with the town.
All right, let me just, I want to just search and see if it's referenced anywhere else in the code, and if so, why.
All right, well, we have, we have an opportunity to, to, we have a public hearing coming up on it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a mi, it's a minor change, but...
So, we can, we can adopt the resolution for the public hearing.
Yes, yes.
That was a good catch, thanks. All right, so that's what we'll do. So we had a first and second, we didn't do a, call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Well, I, Carl, aye.
O'Conner, aye.
Dwyer, aye.
Okay, here's, here's why it's here. Resident, any person who resides within a municipal unit, which unit annually contributes taxes directly or indirectly to the operation of the park, derived directly from taxes levying on the residence in which he, she, it resides.
Yeah, but village of Harriman doesn't pay any taxes towards that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it should just be...
Uh, well, the town of Monroe only towards Smith Clover, but if, Smith Clover is exempt from this.
No, it's not, well, what do you mean exempt?
Well, it's the purpose or the intent of it, which is time.
Right, right, which is time and stuff like that, so, um...
The context of this is time.
Well, you mean, closing and...
Opening and closing. Dawn to dusk.
Yeah, doesn't seem like that park really closes.
Well, Smith Clover Park, because, I mean, they have, you know, I used to be, I used to be in the men's softball league, we played them about 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, that's why, we don't want to touch them.
That's why it says, there's language in here that says, you know, here's the time, unless a different time is set by the park commission.
Okay, I got you.
Which is why I added the park commission as a definition.
Okay.
So...
But I think the unit does come out.
It's funny, I don't know why they would have this. They added it in 2013.
Well, there was a time, I think, when that was different. Uh, I don't know when, but I think there was a time.
When there were taxes from those, from KJ and...
No, 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 when I think they used the park, and I think once it became a different entity, or once it became something different, that changed. I wasn't around at that time. I think this goes back a long time.
Yeah, that goes back into the 70s at least, that I'm aware of. I ain't go back further than that.
Yeah.
Well, I think we could probably take that out. We could also take out, I think, resident. Let me see where else.
Wasn't Dr. Bundren the first?
Yes.
Chairman of the Parks Commission?
You know what I didn't know until just the other day?
He took me to the World's Fair, you know, when I was a kid.
Is that right?
Yeah, he's my dentist.
In 64? No kidding?
Yeah, sure, messing around.
I was looking online, I saw a map, and did you know that, I think, I don't know, upstairs, I just saw the map, I don't know where I saw it. Um, it's a, it's a map of Monroe, 1922. It's here somewhere. It's a visual kind of thing, it's not really a...
Oh, I've seen it.
You've seen it?
I've seen it.
Well, anyway, I saw it online, and I just saw the village wall the other day, I think it must be upstairs. But anyway, do you know that Smith Clover Park was the Monroe Country Club?
Really?
Years ago, it used to be a big house in the back, too.
And that's why it's 22, because in 23 is when they moved it to the Monroe Country Club where you see the...
Yep.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know it.
I would have never known that.
Never.
It'd just be a big house in the back.
Which one, where?
It's Smith Clover Park.
Smith Clover Park.
I think that was like their clubhouse.
All right, so I don't really have anything as well. Elise?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, anybody from the board?
I just wanted to remind people I know with the snow about shoveling the sidewalks. I noticed, the neighborhood I live in, I, it was a great job with the sidewalks being shoveled, but I know the kids are trying to walk, and we really don't want them walking in the road, so just a reminder that the sidewalks are supposed to be shoveled, I believe 24 hours after the snow stops.
Agreed.
I have nothing.
Did you call?
Yeah, where were, wait a minute, where are we with the kiosk, parking kiosk?
He's waiting for a third-party service for the credit card.
Okay.
And I have to make that call, so my goal is this week, done.
All right, and what about our streetlight thing that we worked on, streetlight upgrades?
So, I was just talking to him today, and my day went sideways, but I've got a schedule for tomorrow. I got all the paperwork out. I think we should be able to...
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get the, bring that to a close, get these, get these streetlights upgraded. You're going to see a big difference in the illumination, so it's, I think it's with the amount of walking pedestrians, it's, I think, the most important that we focus on that, and there are, and I know I told you, I think last week, there are quite a few lights out, Monroe. I don't know if...
So, so, yeah, so I reached out to the PD, and their portal is down.
Okay.
At Orange Rockland, but they're aware of them, and they're working to put them back together.
All right, because some of them have been out for a while, but my thing is, are we getting credit on the lights that aren't lit?
I don't know that. I did ask the question of our liaison, so she's researching it.
Okay.
So, yeah, because we pay 50, 60 bucks a month. Agreed. And the portal was our, that was our ticket on the proof side.
Mm-hmm.
When it was reported, because they have to respond within five days, I believe.
Because, like I say, I, I drive by, it seems like the same lights that have been out for quite some time.
He said, if I heard it correctly, I heard three months the portal's been down, so I'm a little confused with that.
I mean, just go, go down Seventh Stage Road, I don't know if it's the dusk to dawn that's on the funeral home or the Presbyterian church, but one of the streetlights right there by the funeral home here is out. It's been, every time I leave a board meeting and go home, it's out.
It's out.
And, and there's, there's a light not too far away from that with an LED bulb in it, and that, that one that's there by the funeral home, I don't even know if that needs to be there. We might be able to take that out of here and look to put that somewhere else where it's, it could be used. But I just, I just want to see that streetlight upgrade done, the kiosk, and we talked about the water rates and so forth, so that's all I have.
Trustee O'Conner?
I'm good.
Okay. Counsel, we have...
I don't have anything for the session, that's what you asked.
Okay. If that's the case, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Carl, I'll make the motion.
O'Conner, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Well, I, Carl, aye.
O'Conner, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So Carrie.